I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting closed session. The time is now 5:35. City Clerk Dorte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometta.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Proton Pemberton.
Here.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present.
We have any, uh, we have any speakers?
We don't have any written public comment, Mayor, but we have one speaker.
We have one speaker. Do I have to read this, this whole thing? Huh? I don't have to, I don't have to read this whole thing, do I? For one speaker? Okay. Speaker number one, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening. How are you all doing? Me, myself, I'm shy and a little nervous still, but I am as happy as a bear cub in a honey tree. So, that's pretty happy, by the way. I want to talk a little bit a second about litigation that is being brought before the city. I have brought it up before. I see we're gonna have at least two anticipated litigations here. One from Matthew Jacobs from Dollar Tree Stores. At least that's Jacobs, not Jacob Emrani, you know, theme song. Who's the other one that'll fight for you? Maybe these are legitimate council folks. And the other one is the City of Huntington Beach versus Newsom. However, I, I would still suggest that the city council take up a protocol and, and cooperate with Department of Homeland Security in cooperating with ICE. In that anybody that brings any litigation in front of the city, either in the form of a lawsuit or representative of a group, be compelled to prove either... And that cooperation can be done through 287G, by the way, and you cannot override the Fourth Amendment. That is the supremacy clause. But that would prevent frivolous lawsuits that you get bombarded with all the time, I'm sure. From unscrupulous lawyers, unscrupulous nonprofits, residents, and also citizens. However, you should have a protocol in cooperation with Department of Homeland Security and through 287G, which is known as Secure Communities, that they be compelled to prove any lawsuits that come forward are from legitimate people or groups. That they are indeed not illegal aliens or representatives of illegal aliens, that they are American citizens. And that would fish out a lot of problems, I think, especially from unscrupulous lawyers and nonprofits. So, you can't override the supremacy clause. You have to observe it. And a vehicle that you can use is 287G of Secure Communities. And I think the city council would do the residents a big favor and yourselves a big favor if you would start looking for that cooperation with DHS and ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion in second to close, public comment?
Sir, moved.
Second.
Sorted by the mayor. Close session. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Item number one, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation for Nando Garcia versus City of Downey, et cetera, all. L.A. County Superior Court, Case Number BC1 or 713683. California Court of Appeals, Case Number B333372. And item number two, Government Code Sections 54956.9D2 and E3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to the Attached Letter Without Exhibits from Matthew Jacobs, Counsel for Dollar Tree Stores Incorporated, dated June 24th, 2025. Letter and exhibits are available for public inspection at the Downey City Clerk's Office located at 11111 Brookshire Avenue, Downey, California 90241 during normal city business hours. Letter without exhibits can be viewed in the link below. Item number three, Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Initiation of Litigation, One Case, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Consideration of Amicus Support for Petition for writ of... Serci... How do you pronounce that, counsel, counselor?
Sercia Rari.
Sercia Rari, thank you. City of Huntington Beach, et cetera, all versus Newsom, et cetera, all. Case Number 23-3694, U.S. Court of Appeals for Ninth Circuit, Case Number 25-337, U.S. Supreme Court. We will now recess to closed session. The time is now 5:41.
Good evening. I will now reconvene the regular city council meeting in closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report the closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. In tonight's closed session, the city council considered all three items agendized. There is reportable action with respect to one of those items. That is item number three. By a vote of five-zero, the city council voted to support and participate in the amicus petition being filed in the United States Supreme Court case entitled City Huntington Beach versus Newsome that is now pending. This means that the city will be participating in the amicus brief filed in support of that case at the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Funk. Before we begin the regular city council meeting, open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. Number cards should not be exchanged with other meeting attendees. If you decide not to speak after taking a number or decide to leave the meeting early, you must return the number card to city staff. If you did not obtain a number card in which to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you a number card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's council meeting rules and for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the council or entering or leaving the chambers. Standing in the aisles or along the walls is prohibited.
Good evening. I will now reconvene the regular city council meeting, closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report the closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. In tonight's closed session, the city council considered all three items agendized. There is reportable action with respect to one of those items. That is item number three. By a vote of five zero, the city council voted to support and participate in the amicus petition being filed in the United States Supreme Court case entitled City Huntington Beach versus Newsome that is now pending. This means that the city will be participating in the amicus brief filed in support of that case at the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Funk. Before we begin the regular city council meeting, open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. Number cards should not be exchanged with other meeting attendees. If you decide not to speak after taking a number or decide to leave the meeting early, you must return the number card to city staff. If you did not obtain a number card in which to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you a number card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's council meeting rules and for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the council or entering or leaving the chambers. Standing in the aisles or along the walls is prohibited. There is overflow seating available in the lobby. If there are no available seats in the chamber, please proceed to sit in the lobby. I will now call to order the regular city council meeting. Open session time is now six thirty-four. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometta?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Present.
Mayor Portem Trujillo? Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Portem Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present, thank you. Please join us. Please stand and join as we welcome Greg Waltz, chaplain of the Downey Police Department, for the invocation. Good evening.
As God's gift of rain has blessed and freshened our air, so has our hearts with the power of prayer. I just made that up. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you another night of civic duty, Lord. This is a wonderful city that you've blessed heartily. Thank you for that. Thank you for each and every member here that puts in the time and the concern and the anguish and the joy and the celebration, all the emotions that we share as a city, as one people in this city, Lord. We have people that are running the show. We have people that are supporting the show, and we have lots of people that care about the show. Bless them all, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Now, please welcome Boy Scout Troop Two for the flag salute.
Claudia, Claudia, you're going first. Your first.
All those in uniform, please salute the flag. All others, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Ladies and gentlemen, for Troop Two, please. Please be seated. Good evening and welcome. I know, you know, there's wet roads and some of you are sacrificing part of the Dodger game to be here, so nice job. Now is the time for city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference and meeting reports. I will start to my left with Councilmember Claudia Frometta.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It is so good to see you. Thank you for being here, even though we're all rooting for the Dodgers. Go Dodgers.
Go Dodgers.
Welcome to your council meeting, those of you that are here and those of you that are watching us via YouTube. I always have such, take such delight in seeing our young people join us. And I know we're going to be recognizing the youth, the new incoming youth commissioners, but I know they're sitting right here to my left, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for wanting to be more involved in your community. Thank you to the parents that are here supporting them. You are the future of our city. You are the future of our state. You are the future of our country. And being able to engage with you and for you to see how your local government works is, I know, is valuable, is important. And I know that my council colleagues and I have great ideas. We're going to put you to work more this year. We want your experience at this youth commission to be fruitful, to be meaningful, and for you to help us on this side as elected officials make better decisions on how to serve you, how to serve our youth. Many of us on this dais have been in the city of Downey for over three decades. Some of us even attended high school here. Go Bears. And so it's important for us. Some of our children have gone to Warren and Downey, both. And it is important for us, as our time on this dais is limited, we are limited to two terms, eight years, we want people that are passionate about their community. We want servant leaders, because it's not just about the title we have in front of us. It really is about loving the community that you're, that you're in and being able to help, having that helpful heart. That is what defines, has defined this community for many years. We have many, many service clubs and organizations. I want to say that the last time I checked, I want to say like thirty-two or thirty-three service clubs. That's a lot of clubs that people are engaged and involve wanting to serve Downey. But so thank you and welcome. I know that was a long intro, but I wanted to make sure you feel special tonight. We give them around. You are juggling schoolwork responsibilities. Maybe you play sports and you are perhaps also having AP classes and being involved in your community is huge. So thank you. Thank you again. I do want to welcome some members of our audience. Sorry, Mayor Sosa, my favorite mayor, my forever mayor, Rick Rodriguez is in the house. Thank you for joining us tonight, sir. Yes, give him around. A great servant leader. Also, my planning commissioner, Carrie Uva is in the house. Carrie, thank you for joining us. And the executive director of our Downey Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Michael Calvert, who's back from a great trip. Welcome back. And of course, the rest of you that are here joining us, thank you once again. I, I want to say, we, we had a fantastic Havana Nights event on October the third, and I want to give a huge shout out to the man over here to my left, Jason Chacon and his team. Thank you, Jason. Huge shout out. Thank you. It was a phenomenal event. Once again, thank you to your team and also our Public Works. I know Lisa's back there. Public Works, wow, you guys are fantastic. And thank you, City Manager Bradley. You were there in attendance, and so was our Assistant City Manager, Vania DeRojas. We have a great, great city. Our police officers, I know this is probably their best, their, their most favorite event, with 10,000 people in attendance, not one problem. Not one. Give them a round of applause. That was, that was great. I know my council colleagues and I were busy throughout the following days. I had, we had the pleasure of attending the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach last week. As you recall, I have served as vice chair and then chair of their Public Safety Policy Committee, Legislative Committee. And this last week, it was wonderful to see all of us there. Mayor, I will not steal your thunder about that award, so you can mention that in your comments. But it was great. We were able to interact with colleagues from up and down the state, the importance of local control, and also responding to emergencies. There were several, several sessions on that. Our city manager and our city attorney also attended several sessions. These opportunities allow us to not just dialogue with other colleagues from cities around us, but learn best practices so that we can come back to our city and as a body talk about what, what can work for Downey. I was, it was a pleasure for me to attend a session on, you know, ethics and government. We see, we see these days that that continues to be lacking. And so it is important for us as council members to continue to be educated and learn new tools. Couple of events that I want to point out to you coming up that are important is this coming Saturday from five to nine PM at the Columbia Memorial Space Center, we have Spooky Science. And it is a great event. Please bring the family. We are the city of STEM City, right? That is a recognition that we received this year. Also, November 12th, we have Dia de los Muertos Art Festival. As you know, we have the whole plaza closes the area for art, but also for the Dia de los Muertos Festival. So we, we look forward to seeing you, community, at those two events. And I've got a couple of asks for staff. And one, if we can, please, I know the holidays are fast approaching, and I would like to see a little more, a little more lights and decorations for the holidays down Firestone Boulevard between, between the Brookshire and Lorena Avenue. I don't know if you've traveled to other cities around the holidays and their neighboring cities that have really beautiful holiday display lights in the middle of their main street. So I would like to request that for Firestone Boulevard. I know the DDIA in Downey Avenue has the nutcrackers that they put for, for the holidays, but maybe something a little bit more pronounced for our main corridor of Firestone Boulevard. If I can get a second, that would be great.
Second.
Thank you. And then also, I do want to recognize and highlight our Director of Community Development. Irma, thank you for the work that your team is doing. For those of you that don't know, Irma keeps this council abreast of things, big projects that are happening throughout our city. And her recap of all of the work and the projects that her department is reviewing is essential for us to, to know what is happening. A lot of moving parts are going on in twelve and a half square miles. And we really do try to keep abreast of all those project economic developments. So thank you, Irma, and thank you, Marlon, for, for all the work you do. Mr. Sosa, that will conclude my comments. Just a couple of shout outs to our PD. Thank you for continuing to keep us safe. I know there's, again, the holiday season is approaching and the potential for more theft or robberies always increases. So thank you for, for continuing to make sure our offices are out there and visible. And to our fire chief, thank you for keeping us safe in this time of increased fire season danger. I know right now we had some great rain, but we, we shall always be prepared. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Frometta. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to jump off a little bit of what my colleague was mentioning. We attended the League of California Cities Conference where we participated in numerous workshops. Some of the workshops I participated were struggles of Proposition Thirty-Six, which we both attended, parking, which is a huge situation in our community, youth participation and engagement is another one that we attended, my colleague Dorothy and Roger attended, and public safety and technology. And so one thing, I'm glad you mentioned it, is that when we were in those workshops, well, I'm not going to say anything. I'm the youngest council member here.
Is that necessary?
But I think it's really important that we engage with our youth, especially our youth leaders. And one thing that we learned during the youth engagement is that not a lot of cities have that engagement or have youth commissioners. So one thing that Dorothy and I and Roger, we were sitting down at a table, we were discussing, is how do we get to know our commissioners, especially our youth commissioners, better? And so we talked to Roger, and I don't know if I need a second, but with Dorothy, we want to get quarterly updates from our youth commissioners so we can really see what initiatives and projects they have, because I think it's really important that we have that engagement with our youth. So I want to see if we can, I mean, I agree with her. We're going to put you hardworking this year. Get ready, guys.
We used to have that. We used to have more quarterly updates from our youth commission. Again, I think during COVID and post-COVID, things have changed a little bit, but I think that's something that can definitely be done.
I, you know, I'll just chime in. I could second that if that's needed, but that's, you know, they signed, not signed up, but they want to get involved, then let's let them get involved, you know?
And so that's, so I'm glad I got the support, and I'm excited for what this year has in store for you guys. Another update, our meeting that I attended, we did the community event meeting at Golden Park regarding a dog park that is potentially going into Golden Park. While I know that we're going to discuss this project at the next council meeting, I do want to share with my colleagues and with the community that it was a very well-attended and informative gathering. I just want to say a big thank you to Jason, Monica, for leading this meeting, as well as my colleague Dorothy, Roger. And I had four of my commissioners attend, which I really appreciate, that they really came in and, and really want to engage and hear the concerns of my residents at Golden Park. During that meeting, they did bring up some concerns. So I have one ask of public work. I was hoping we can add some crosswalks and stop signs at Castana Avenue. If we can do a study, if I can get a second for that?
Second.
And thank you. Havana Nights, I just want to say thank you. It was, it's getting bigger and better every year. I just want to say kudos to Jason and his entire team for making this amazing event happen. It was a lot of fun. I think we all had a lot of fun.
Oh, yes, we did.
And I do have one last ask. If I can get an update on the Washburn pavement, that's, Washburn needs a lot of work, so I want to see if I can get an update on Washburn's schedule for that. For the, the paving of that street, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, sure. We'll get you an update on that, bro.
If I may, Mayor, just one thing I forgot to mention is residents have, continue asking about updates on that pilot program regarding the lights, how to request lights. I know, in fact, there are some here in the audience tonight, north of Florence, along Matic, that street seems to be very, very dark. There's no lights. So where are we with, with that update?
So we have been working with some groups within this, within the city that are interested in doing an installation project as part of our pilot program. We are working on some of the changes to the program, and I think we're bringing that back in November is our plan. So that will be coming back to you very shortly.
Thank you.
With that, I conclude my comments for today. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. So I had some meetings with some friends at LAPD, and they were telling me about a senior lead officer program. I know we're not the size of LA. I was wondering if perhaps we would consider initiating a lead community service officer program. Obviously, our CSOs are less expensive. What is it? It would be one assigned CSO per district. So in starting 2028, we would have five. It'd be the CSO that council members can turn to, but most importantly, maybe our neighborhood block captains can have somebody directly at the police station. Again, we have to be really careful with how we use the police officers, but CSOs, perhaps a senior CSO program, it'd be that one, two, they would build institutional, that one person we can go to, they would build institutional knowledge, at least over the course of a year, of what are the hotspots in each individual district. And instead of having to take police officer time, perhaps we could use CSOs for that. I'd just like to see if it's something we would consider and what it would look like. So if I could have a second for a CSO program for district.
Look into that. That's a good idea.
I think it's something that we have discussed in the past. I'll follow up with the chief, and we'll, I'll get you something to the council on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a couple of requests for sand volleyball courts. I, I don't know if we have any. I thought I saw some in Apollo. Perhaps we could do some more social media outreach to let people know we have those. I don't know if sand volleyball is coming back or, but I've gotten a couple of requests. If we could just have some publicity about the fact.
Do some outreach on that. I know the high schools have some of those, I saw them the other day, but we're happy to do some outreach on that item. Thank you.
Great. I had an opportunity to drive towards our western border today on Firestone. The Seven Ten Freeway entry and exit ramps look horrible. I'd like to see if we can work perhaps with our neighboring city of Southgate and together go to Caltrans. I know ultimately it's going to be a Caltrans issue, but everything from the signage, starting in front of the Chevrolet dealership across from the McDonald's, and I know that's Southgate territory, but so many of our residents use that freeway entrance and exits. And I just think aesthetically, it's been neglected for the years that I've been here. So if we can, if I can have a second for?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So we'd be happy to reach out to the city manager in Southgate to talk to them. It's in their, they're actually a jurisdiction. It's not under ours, but partnering with them and do whatever we can to get that information to Caltrans, sure.
But I would like Sacramento to know, since we are bordered not just by one, two, three, but four freeways, I would like them to know that Downey residents are concerned about the condition of the Seven Ten Freeway, particularly on Firestone. It really should have more regular attention. It's horrible. So if we could work on that. Thank you.
If I could ask a really quick question. I know during the ice race, we sent out a letter to our representative. I mean, I'm okay with suggesting writing a nicely worded letter, at least to start with our surrounding cities that are impacted by Caltrans. Ever since we got in council, we always hear concerns about that. So I don't know if it's right now a good time for us to send a letter out to our representatives?
You know, I, I'll say something in my comments to address that, because I was with Barbara Chalera and Blanca Pacheco and announced something, but I'll talk about that later, but that's a good idea.
I just don't understand. I mean, doesn't anybody from Caltrans drive in and out of those? It's clearly visible that those signs are just all tagged up. There's all there's all kinds of stickers on them. I mean, they really should be looking out for cleanliness.
You can tell when you're in Orange County right away, right?
Right, so if we could tell them that, you know, Downey does not appreciate their neglect?
And if I may, just not to throw too much salt in the wound, but we have actually reached out to Caltrans on a number of occasions about their off-ramps, so we'll continue to do so.
Yeah, thank you, let's just stay on them. I think that's the way it has to work. I will say, and thank you to Assemblywoman Pacheco, especially Ari Reese. They've been very responsive to numerous requests that I have sent them. I think this is just the nature of what our life is going to be in Downey because of the four freeways, we just have to stay on them. And lastly, to our youth commissioners, welcome. I would like to see if perhaps we can have some sort of, I like the update, but I've never heard really what ideas are coming from this great body. Maybe there are ideas for programs, for services, or for policies, since we are the legislative body. I would like to hear what ideas our commissioners are coming up with quarterly for us to consider adopting those and maybe asking staff to look into those from the day. I want you to know, especially to my commissioners, we see you as advisors. We want to hear from you, concerns, ideas. So, if you ever think like, what am I doing here? You're there to give us advice on what the youth see Downey like, and what the youth would like to see in Downey. We want to have a city that you're proud of, and that you're willing to come back to if you choose to go to another university in another state or town. I'm really big on people coming back into the community and investing all that knowledge back here. Hopefully, you love Downey enough that you consider coming back here, and who knows, maybe someday buying your first home and building your families here, so we can have generations of Downeites down the line. So, thank you for your service. I look forward to hearing about those great ideas and suggestions. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Mayor Protem, Dorothy Pemberton.
Thank you, Mayor Sosa. And again, I'd like to welcome everyone as well attending, and especially to our youth commissioners, and we will be sworn in later. I've attended a number of items that I'll go over as well. We've all mentioned Havana Nights, but we have to say it, because it's a fantastic evening for our community to celebrate the Cuban heritage that we have here. And Jason, the amazing staff you did along with Public Works. I also attended the Gangs Out of Downey Good Tournament. It's a golf tournament for the memorial tournament for Ricky Galvez, and it was a sold-out and very successful event to support our good committee. The State of the City had their, the State of the City for Bellflower had their luncheon. Now, Bellflower, neighboring Bellflower, is only 80,000 people. We are, youth commissioners, 114,000, so they are 30% smaller. But they're implementing a number of things. LPRs, license plate readers, in new several locations. And something new that I heard about called Shot Spotter. It's a gunshot detector system, and they're going to be implementing that. Just mentioning that. They're also rebanding their seasonal park and rec publication into a new city news publication. Maybe it's something we want to consider in the future. Putting a mailer in the water bill of some of the activities, not activities, but rather things that we are doing here in the community down the road. A hard copy for people that don't follow us on social media. And lastly, in the city of Bellflower, White's Funeral Home, which was iconic on Flower Street, it will now be the site of 30 townhomes. So, I know all cities are scrambling to build. I attended a film industry symposium. It was hosted by County Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. And I went to Raleigh Studios in West Hollywood to discuss filming in cities. And unlike some cities that don't want filming, we welcome that in the city of Downey. There's been a lot of filming, the Bob's Big Boy is iconic for certain movies. We had Downey Studios located there at the promenade at one time. So, I spoke to the film industry members, and they remember Downey Studios, and reminding them that we are a city that will enjoy the filming, because it has many historical places that they can film, and it also brings economic business to our city. The Olson Townhomes on the island, update to that. Phase one, which is about 10 homes, townhomes already are sold out, and moving in around Thanksgiving. They will be closing Esco around Thanksgiving. They are building the last phases, phase two and three, probably close, finishing in June of next year. So, there's some brand-new townhomes there on Suva and Bluff Road that, if you're not aware of, that they are now at the stages for taking reservations. And they look quite, they look quite well, pretty. I attended a chamber mixer, tagging on the Caltrans. Tender mixer, where both our state Senator Barbara Chalera and Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco spoke. And they stated, if you have any concerns with agencies such as Caltrans, to reach out. So, I stood up, of course, and said, I do. And I asked that they get Caltrans to clean up our freeways. So, especially the on-and-off ramps, as a council member has mentioned, on Downey Avenue, all our freeways, in Downey, rather. Specifically, too, I was on Bellflower on ramp by the 105, Lakewood by the 105. It's atrocious, it's bad. And so, I asked them, right there, point-blank, to please reinstate the community service program for people who were convicted of minor violations, who need to do their community service hours to start picking up the trash. And they said, well, because of COVID, it stopped. Well, that's half a decade ago. So, let's please, asking them to please clean our roads, and to everyone out there, to please do not litter. That's the first solution. Do not litter, and let's start with all of us, and also treat, including our children. Now, you mentioned, we all mentioned, we went to the California, League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, and we had a lot of opportunities. My takeaway, I went to a few on homelessness. The city of Redlands has a proactive homeless outreach program, like we do with CityNet, and it's pretty much identical to ours. They also have shelter beds that they contract. They had 300 people, three years ago, homeless people in their community of Redlands, and it's been reduced about 50% because they go out in outreach and offer services that are available, and that helps take care of those people that need assistance. And with our youth commissioners, we've all talked about it before, but I also had down here to have them come quarterly or bimonthly, or semi-monthly, rather, and give a report of what they are doing. And they can listen to what we have on council to take it also back, a give and take, because you are the future. You know, you are the future, you are here, you wanted to do this, and we really thank you and welcome you for that. So, we are here to help support you and hope to see you every other month, giving a report, taking back informations. So, thank you. Now, on the consent calendar, I'd like to point out any items of concern for our residents. Item number four that we will be approving is the construction contract for the Guatemala and Suva traffic signal. And that's close by the Olson Townhome. So, during the Olson Townhomes discussion, residents wanted a better flow of traffic across the bridge, because it was backed up, one had a light, one had a stop sign. So, now, this new signal will alleviate that congestion and allow for less congestion at Suva Foster Bridge and Bluff, that corner. The corner of Guatemala will have crosswalks to safely cross across. Construction will start at the end of the year and be completed at the beginning of next year. So, please, residents, bear in mind that there will be construction there, there will be delays, and start making alternative plans and routes while we are under construction. And speaking of construction, we have to bring up Lakewood and Firestone. And I know it's very hard right now, coming down sometimes to one lane because they are trenching and digging underneath two lanes. Wanted to let you know that what we are doing is we are constructing two left-turn lanes, north and southbound of Lakewood. So, northbound, two lanes to turn. Before, we just had one lane, and then we also had a green light, which would allow cars to turn when it was safe. That's the problem, when the driver thinks it's safe, there's a car running the light. And this is the number-one intersection that has a lot of accidents. So, we are going to be making dedicated left-turn lanes, two of them. And we look forward to you working with us, and we're trying to work as quickly as we can. I've already spoken to our city manager to see if they can try and prioritize construction right in that heavy, heavy area, if possible. But I know that the construction crews only have a certain schedule, we can only do so much, but it is the main artery. We will do our best to see what we can do.
On that issue, Madam Mayor Protem, sorry to interrupt. I've often wondered why we cannot, in our RFPs, especially if we know this is a main intersection, ask for construction at nighttime? Is there any way we can consider? I mean, it is very difficult to get through the intersection.
There's apartments nearby, and so we don't want to keep people awake?
Yeah, I mentioned that as well.
Wake up at night while we're doing, but yeah, sometimes we do do night work. You're absolutely right about that. This particular one has apartments not too far from the vicinity. Doing night work will keep people awake at night, so it'll create even more issues. So, kind of forced to do it in the day, unfortunately.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we can, put a lane back, we should do that, right?
Okay, thank you.
We all know that we have a shortage of parking on our streets, and some of these prime spots have abandoned cars. And I'm finding a lot of abandoned cars on our streets and asking them to be towed by code enforcement. So, cars must be moved every three days. And here's where residents can help us. Residents can help to find abandoned cars in their neighborhood. Watch your neighborhood, report unfamiliar cars that look abandoned. Sometimes they steal cars and leave them in a neighborhood for days. They may look dirty, plates are missing, may be smashed from an accident. So, call Parking Enforcement, Sergeant Hernandez, I'm sorry, but you may be getting some calls. Parking Enforcement at 562-904-2342. Correct, Chief, Parking Enforcement? Right. Recently, and lastly, recently in the news, it's been discovered that the Insurance Commissioner, Ricardo Lara, has taken at least 48 trips since 2019 all over the world that apparently did not relate to his position. And many were lavish expenditures. The ABC News had reported that his office had been unavailable to provide clear business justifications. And these apparent excessive trips are blatant misuse of public funds, and where was the check and balance system? So, we need scrutiny and justification in using taxpayer money for elected officials. Excessive and exorbitant travel expenses were obviously approved, but not unchecked, but not checked. So, in lieu of this recent investigation, it brought to everyone's attention, including myself, who was checking his expenses. I want to make sure that we, here on council, never misuse public funds or the public's trust. And we should take trips adding, asking to be reimbursed by the city that are not, that are, we should not, never take trips that are not deemed necessary for our position. We should have policies and checks in place to prevent the misuse of public's money, including flying first class or extended trips for a vacation, and it's not about our personal use. So, I'd like to know from staff, I'll have to ask city manager, I'd like to know from staff, how are our travel plans approved, or what amounts are we allowed to incur without approval of a trip, either by the city manager or the council? And, you know, generally with other organizations, there's a budgeted amount, or just the president, or the two delegates attend if it's an extenuating trip. So, nonessential members, nonessential members may attend at their own personal expense, but unwarranted representatives at events, you know, that we are not there for that. So, I just want to see what policies we have in place on something like that.
The city does have a travel policy that's been approved. That's put in place the rules and regulations about how travel is approved and how it occurs. Of course, any expenditures that we have go through our finance department, go through my desk as well to be reviewed and approved, or the city managers, to make sure it's consistent with that policy. So, we do take that very seriously. Happy to provide you a copy of that policy, so you can take a look at it, which spells out how lodging is booked, how flights are also booked, additionally, how food is paid for, that kind of stuff while you're on travel. So, happy to provide that.
Okay, great, it just lets our city know and the public know that we are always watching what we're doing. And I just had this flyer, sorry, I missed this one. This is Siaka, you know me and animals, spay and neutering. And Siaka is, for the first time ever, having the Good Mobile coming to Siaka, low-cost mobile spay and neutering, October 9th and 30th. So, if you want to find more information, go on their website. I'm all about getting our pets spayed and neutered to stop overpopulation. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pemberton. And I'll just get out of the way, to the youth commission, I'm not going to, these guys want to put you to work, I'm not going to emphasize any more of that. No, I think you guys have done enough. I do want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec Commissioner. Speaking of Havana Nights, this guy is always very selfless with his time and his ideas. He's a big cheerleader for Havana Nights. Want to give a shout out to David Gins, always in the crowd right there. Thank you for all your work. So, I did, okay, so a couple weeks ago, I had coffee with the mayor at town hall. It was very successful, we had a lot of residents show up, and we had some great dialogue. I went through a presentation and informed the residents in attendance on some updates in the city and some exciting things coming down the pike. And was able to do some Q and A with some residents, got some good questions. And, you know, that constituted some good dialogue. So, you know, the town halls are voluntary by us council members, and when we have those, we, you know, really invite the public to come and engage with us. You know, it's a great opportunity to engage with us as elected officials on a one-on-one basis or in a group setting, and ask any questions, no questions are off the table, and air any grievances. That's a good time to, you know, be able to discuss those, because we're all, you know, this is our city. So, I do want to thank the staff for putting that together. We had a great turnout, and really, I generated some really good dialogue with some of our residents, so. Also, as mentioned, League of Cal Cities. I know, you know, we attended a few sessions that my colleagues had mentioned. I do want to mention that we did, we were recognized during the session in front of, I don't know, a few thousand people. The 2025 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence from the League of Cal Cities for the City of STEM Initiative. So, I'd like to thank our director, Ben Dickell, and his team. And just, for those of you who don't know, Ben is the director of the Columbia Space Center. Huh? Okay, well, executive director, sorry. And does a great job, you know, Columbia Memorial Space Center, we're very proud of that, and there's big news coming out from that soon. But the City of STEM, which we were recognized for, for those of you who don't know, is the science festival run through the Columbia Memorial Space Center. And earlier this year, it was deemed the official LA, official science festival of LA County. And that expo happens at Exposition Park once a year in April, and it's a big deal. So, big congrats to Ben Dickell and his team at Columbia Space Center and City of STEM for that recognition. This is really the regional hub for science and engineering education, so, thank you. Congratulations. Also, I do want to mention, there is a shredding event this Saturday. You know, bring all your documents that you're not able to shred at home. It's from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, right here at the Civic Center. I'm going to take advantage of that. And also, I did attend a two-day executive education forum for local leaders at the USC Soul Price of Public Policy, which I really enjoyed, it was Friday and Saturday, two weeks ago. And there is a price for that, but Independent Cities, ICA, thank you for that. They picked up the tab on my tuition. And it was a two-day, very informative. Most of our two-day session focused on fiscal responsibility, fiscal management for municipalities like ours, and then also emergency preparedness, which I found very, very informative, which leads me to my first request. I do have a few requests tonight. I am requesting from staff, I'd like to put together an emergency preparedness expo for our residents. And I would request that if we do it during the week, that we do it in the evening, so people working can actually attend it without any limitations, maybe from 6:00 to 8:00. Or if we do it on the weekends, on Saturday, maybe, you know, like a three-hour. But I would like to do that and invite all the relative entities and players like our SER team, Police and Fire, Rakdi and her team at the emergency, what's the proper name?
Emergency management?
Emergency Management?
Emergency Management Team. And also the utilities, Southern California Edison and the Gas Company, and any other relevant organizations, just to provide information from each of their respective entities so that our, that our residents are properly informed. Obviously, it'd be a free event, that all of us residents here in the city of Downey are properly equipped and informed on resources available to us should an emergency happen or like a natural disaster, something that type, you know. For those of you who live in Downey or in the region, you may remember that we had a blackout on Christmas Eve. So I think, I think it's relevant to have that. Maybe, it may be a little too tight to have it before Thanksgiving, but maybe at the beginning of December before the end of the year holidays. So if we can make that happen.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, to that, we used to have an emergency preparedness fair here in the city of Downey, put by Rakdi in the fire department. I think the last one we had, and it brought all those entities that you mentioned together. In fact, the fire department would do a demo as well, and the SIR team would do a couple of demos as well. It was very well attended. The last time we had it, if I'm not mistaken, was in 2021, and it could have been in the parking lot area of Calvary Chapel, Downey. So I think that those would definitely, it's time we bring that back.
So actually, staff, we've had a few conversations about this. The timing, we'll have to talk a little bit about, but I know that the team already has an idea of how to execute that plan, so we'll get more to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay tuned. And let's see here, second request, I know that, you know, there's a lot of, I know the intersection of Firestone and Lakewood has been mentioned, but there's, you know, there's a little bit of pain getting to that. I think overall, it's going to be a really good thing for traffic flow and for the mitigation of accidents and dangers in that intersection. But in the meantime, there is, there is a little bit of pain around the neighborhoods. So I do know that I've heard from some residents that I've known for a long time, just growing up here, down Cecilia, I guess, you know, some of these navigation systems are, you know, diverting people to different areas. So I know down Cecilia, there's a lot more traffic flow going eastbound. And I'd like to see about, and my understanding is, you know, there's a decent amount of people that, or decent amount of drivers that speed down Cecilia. So I would like to look at a traffic survey down Cecilia Avenue, mainly between Pangborn and Woodruff. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
Between Pangborn and Woodruff.
Yes. And also, a third request, I would like to, we've briefly discussed this before, but I would like to see a study on possible, a tiered fee structure for our businesses, our small businesses, with respect to CUPs and all the other fees that come in with. I'd just like to see if it's feasible to maybe look at a tiered structure for smaller businesses, mom and pops that are trying to open a business in our city, so.
Let's do a second, Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, can we also incorporate looking at veterans trying to start businesses to see if the other cities do anything for our veterans who are trying to start businesses? If there's anything we could do for them, if we could incorporate that into that?
Yeah, we actually do have that in our work plan, so absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my comments. Again, thank you all for being here. City Manager Roger Bradley.
Not much to add, Mayor. Just want to say again, congratulations to the community, to the council, and to staff for the great, you know, recognition that we received at the League Conference. Helen Putnam Award is a big deal, at least for us in the profession. It's a very prestigious award. And thank you to the Space Center staff for the excellent STEM Festival they put on. And again, the recognition that we were able to receive from that brings great credit upon the community and upon the city. So thanks for all the hard work. That's all from staff.
Okay, thank you. I will now make my way down for presentations. We have a few presentations tonight. First one is, if you don't know, I have, during my mayoral year, I have what's called the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. And what we've done to switch things up this year is we've opened it up to the public. So I only have a couple more months left in my mayoral year. And the whole, the whole idea behind this is if, you know, I wanted to open it up to the public. If you know of anybody who's making a difference in the community, we have a lot of people. We have 114,000 residents in this community. It's a very collaborative community. But there are a lot of people that, you know, some of us haven't even heard of, that are doing some great things in the community. If you could think of anybody who's making a difference, please let me know right away. I want them recognized, okay? Which leads me to tonight's recipient of the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award, Jeannie Wood, who is a community volunteer, who happens to be my Parks and Rec Commissioner, very loyal. Jeannie has been a proud resident of Downey for 39 years and has worked at Albertson's for an impressive 48 years. Jeannie began her volunteer work journey 27 years ago with the Downey Chamber of Commerce. Seeking to broaden her horizons, she took on a second volunteer role with the Downey Theater. Jeannie later became an officer with the Alx Lodge, a role she has proudly held for 14 years. In addition to these commitments, Jeannie has volunteered with the Downey Police Department for nine years and has served on the Downey Parks and Rec and Community Commission, Council District Two, which is my district, since 2018. And then, so Jeannie's unwavering commitment to service and community involvement is a shining example of civic pride and dedication, and I'm honored to call Jeannie a friend. Please welcome Jeannie Wood.
I'm sorry, I'm so humbled.
That's okay. That's all right. Thank you. I'm humbled that you're humbled to receive this award, okay? Here's a city pin for Jeannie, okay? And also to Jeannie, it basically repeats everything I just said, but for your selfless work in the community, and I think people who don't know you can tell that you have a heart for this community, and we appreciate you. So congratulations, Jeannie.
Well, I started with the chamber 27 years ago because I wanted to climb out of my shell. I've always been so nervous, shy, no self-confidence, which I still am partly today, but I wanted to break that habit, so I started with the chamber. And then I liked that so much, meeting people in the city. I did my other volunteer jobs. When I see people come to me, like on the national night out, and a simple thing like passing out a hot dog or a bag of chips, and the smile on their faces, the adults and especially the children, it just, it warms my heart to no measure. It gets me right here. Or when I'm working at my police department, the ladies in the records, every time I leave, they say, "Thank you so much," and it just, it gets me right here. And then when I, when I'm working at, like the theater, just sending somebody to their seat and they say, "Thank you," and give me a hug, it's just like I want to just cry. It just gets me. But all my volunteers, especially the kids, when they just, they say, "Thank you for your service," and this, it just, it just gets me, it just warms my heart so much. And I made so many new friends in this, in this city. My council, my, you're all my friends that have become my family. That's how I think of you as family. And my dear friends that have become my family, my second family. And I feel so blessed. There's a saying from a famous movie, it says, "No man is a fader who has friends." And I feel so blessed. I don't feel like a fader anymore when I have friends. And as long as God keeps me alive, I will keep volunteering. Whoever wants me and wherever I'm needed, I will be there. And I also joined the Assistance League, so that's seven now I am on. But I'll do more fire chief, I still want a job with you. Thank you. I'm, thank you for my heart.
My fire chief. And my car's from chicken. Come on, please. You're my father.
He's everybody's Jason. And my chief. Oh, you're about the loudest one. Allison, be ready.
That's okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, they're shy. Thank you, Jeannie. That's okay. Thank you. Oh, nice. All right, we're now going to, thank you, Jeannie. We're now going to acknowledge Siaka's 50th anniversary. On October 16th, 1975, Siaka was formed as a joint powers authority. Siaka currently serves approximately 811,876 residents in 14 cities, including Downey. October 16th, 2025 marks the significant milestone of 50 years of quality animal care and control services for Siaka. Since its founding, Siaka has remained committed to work on solutions geared towards challenges in the community surrounding animal welfare. Siaka's professional team proudly serves the Downey community by enforcing animal-related laws, rescuing animals from abuse, abandonment, and neglect, reuniting lost pets with their families, coordinating adoptions of unclaimed animals with new families. Siaka's teamwork tirelessly works to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all animals. Congratulations on 50 years of service. And here to accept a proclamation is Denise Woodside.
I'm so glad I announced Spain and neutering. What a great time.
Good evening, Mayor Sosa, Mayor Pro Tem Pemberton, honorable council, and respected city staff. My name is Denise Woodside, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of Siaka. It is an absolute honor to receive this recognition tonight on behalf of Siaka and the Board of Commissioners. Together, as a community, we celebrate this milestone and the strides made as a community over the past 50 years. In fact, Downey is one of three founding cities, so it is extra special to share this moment with you all tonight. Siaka continues to promote responsible pet ownership, and we are thankful to the city of Downey for their support. We thank the community of Downey and their care and dedication to their furry companions, and we thank the city for taking this moment to recognize the compassionate and professional work provided by Siaka's team. Collectively, with the support and collaboration of the community and community partnerships, Siaka's team remains committing, committed to evolving animal care and control services to meet the ever-changing needs of the community and their forward to continuing to work with the community of Downey in efforts to protect the health and safety of the community and their pets. Thank you.
The United States Navy's 250th Birthday, celebrated on October 13th, 2025, marks a significant milestone in the nation's maritime history. The Navy's establishment was a response to the need for a swift and capable naval force to defend American interest and maritime sovereignty. Over the years, the Navy has evolved from a small fleet of vessels to a global command with a diverse range of capabilities, including submarine, aircraft carriers, and unmanned undersea vehicles. The Navy's commitment to excellence and innovation has been a cornerstone of its identity, and the celebrations, and the celebrations aim to honor its past and inspire future generations to serve in the US Navy. Accepting on behalf of the United States Navy tonight is Maurice Wilson, Master Chief Petty Officer for the United States Navy, retired. Maurice D. Wilson, Master Chief Petty Officer, United States Navy, retired, is a serial veteran entrepreneur and rebel with a cause, dedicated to closing the gaps veterans face when transitioning to civilian life. A former Fleet Marine Force Hospital spokesman and preventative medicine technician, he spent 26 years in the US Navy before serving a decade with the Urban League. In 2010, he co-founded the National Veterans Transition Services Incorporated and launched Reboot Workshops and the STAR Program, the nation's first community-led off-base transitional or transition model, pioneering data-driven systems that help veterans successfully reintegrate into civilian life. Master Chief Petty Officer Wilson, we thank you for your service, and the city of Downey congratulates the US Navy for the 250th birthday celebration. Master Chief Petty Officer Wilson, I present this city pin to you.
Thank you, sir.
And this proclamation recognizing the 250th birthday of the United States Navy.
Thank you so much, there.
Thank you.
Well, I don't fill a day over 249, but on behalf of the United States Navy and all of my fellow sailors, past, present, and future, I want to just thank you for this honor, this recognition. Let me just say, there's a wonderful story about Downey. About five years ago, we partnered up to help solve some reintegration issues. And I think a lot of you know that every year, about 200,000 service members transition out of the military. And there's some stunning information. Roughly 66% of them leave the military without a job. 61% are underemployed and are struggling out here in the civilian community. Each year, every day, we have somewhere anywhere between 22 to 44 deaths based upon transition and reintegration issues and challenges. And so, serving for our country is a deep honor, but it does come with some challenges. And some of those challenges is when we try to come back home. And that's why I'm really proud of Downey, because five years ago, we partnered up with the city of Downey through the leadership of former Mayor Regis and others to implement the nation's first community-based reintegration center right here in Downey. And since then, Downey has been leading the nation. And now, come fast forward, as of this year, the state of California is now getting on board with that idea, and they're launching what they call Senate Bill 519, which is to close the gaps of transitioning service members throughout the entire state, with Downey leading the charge. And so I'm just really proud of this moment and the recognition and the honor that you guys are giving myself, but also, I just want to say the same right back to you in Downey. We're really proud of you, and thank you for everything that you've done for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few presentations tonight. First one is, if you don't know, I have, during my mayoral year, I have what's called the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. And what we've done to switch things up this year is we've opened it up to the public. So I only have a couple more months left in my mayoral year. And the whole, the whole idea behind this is if, you know, I wanted to open it up to the public. If you know of anybody who's making a difference in the community, we have a lot of people. We have 114,000 residents in this community. It's a very collaborative community. But there are a lot of people that, you know, some of us haven't even heard of, that are doing some great things in the community. If you could think of anybody who's making a difference, please let me know right away. I want them recognized, okay? Which leads me to tonight's recipient of the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award, Jeannie Wood, who is a community volunteer, who happens to be my Parks and Rec Commissioner, very loyal. Jeannie has been a proud resident of Downey for 39 years and has worked at Albertson's for an impressive 48 years. Jeannie began her volunteer work journey 27 years ago with the Downey Chamber of Commerce. Seeking to broaden her horizons, she took on a second volunteer role with the Downey Theater. Jeannie later became an officer with the Alx Lodge, a role she has proudly held for 14 years. In addition to these commitments, Jeannie has volunteered with the Downey Police Department for nine years and has served on the Downey Parks and Rec and Community Commission, Council District Two, which is my district, since 2018. And then, so Jeannie's unwavering commitment to service and community involvement is a shining example of civic pride and dedication, and I'm honored to call Jeannie a friend. Please welcome Jeannie Wood.
I'm sorry, I'm so humbled.
That's okay. That's all right. Thank you. I'm humbled that you're humbled to receive this award, okay? Here's a city pin for Jeannie, okay? And also to Jeannie, it basically repeats everything I just said, but for your selfless work in the community, and I think people who don't know you can tell that you have a heart for this community, and we appreciate you. So congratulations, Jeannie.
Well, I started with the chamber 27 years ago because I wanted to climb out of my shell. I've always been so nervous, shy, no self-confidence, which I still am partly today, but I wanted to break that habit, so I started with the chamber. And then I liked that so much, meeting people in the city. I did my other volunteer jobs. When I see people come to me, like on the national night out, and a simple thing like passing out a hot dog or a bag of chips, and the smile on their faces, the adults and especially the children, it just, it warms my heart to no measure. It gets me right here. Or when I'm working at my police department, the ladies in the records, every time I leave, they say, "Thank you so much," and it just, it gets me right here. And then when I, when I'm working at, like the theater, just sending somebody to their seat and they say, "Thank you," and give me a hug, it's just like I want to just cry. It just gets me. But all my volunteers, especially the kids, when they just, they say, "Thank you for your service," and this, it just, it just gets me, it just warms my heart so much. And I made so many new friends in this, in this city. My council, my, you're all my friends that have become my family. That's how I think of you as family. And my dear friends that have become my family, my second family. And I feel so blessed.
For any Army veterans in the crowd, that wasn't in the script. Thank you, Mr. Guard. Okay, now to the Downey Youth Commission, who's in for a lot of work, apparently. The Downey, the Downey Youth Commission is comprised of 15 students appointed by the city council. Before, before me, we have our nine new newly-appointed commissioners. These new commissioners will assist in the planning of our annual Student Government Day event held in spring of 2026. The event invites high school students from our Downey schools to the city hall to learn about the way municipal government works. And we all on the council look forward to all that you will accomplish this year, so. I will call them up one by one, and we have the certificates right here. If my colleagues can come and help me distribute these. Yeah, and pins. So, and I'll just hand you guys your respective, for your respective districts. For District One, Caitlin Castilla. For District Two, Annabelle Labrine. And District Two, Zuriel Serrano. I got to say something about Zuriel. This kid was relentless and emailed me several times over the past year. I'm like, gotta give this kid a shot. Zuriel Serrano. Persistence pays off. Good job, Zuriel. Out of District Three, Alexis Avalos. Out of District Three, James Jimenez.
James, nice to meet you face-to-face. You have photography and video in there. You're gonna make great videos of the team.
Well, it says, Zoe Perez. It says, do we have three for District Three? Is that right? Okay. It shouldn't be. Zoe Perez? We'll deal with it later. District Four, Giovanna Gonzalez. Out of District Five, Damaris Almanzan. And last but not least, out of District Five, Alejandro Zapata. Yeah, we'll take a picture. All right, thank you all. That concludes our presentations. You don't really have to stick around unless you really want to learn more about civic matters. Thank you. Oh, thank you. All right, now's the time for public comment regarding agenda consent calendar and non-agenda items.
The city council will now take public comment on agenda consent calendar and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. We will be calling blue number cards for the public comment period. Before we begin the public comment period, we would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting; any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council; any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking; any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting; and attacks of a personal nature on city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. We remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to the mayor and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience.
The city clerk, Dr. Arteta, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
How many speakers have taken our number?
We have three, Mayor.
Thank you. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have three minutes to address the city council or remind all speakers that you must remain seated until your number is called. Speaker number one, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to ask, and I don't know why I have to come to this meeting just to ask, why the City of Downey doesn't have housing? Like, resources?
I'll get our staff to follow up with her after this and answer her questions. We're happy to have staff engage with you after this. This is an opportunity to address the council only. There's no opportunity to dialogue from dais to this.
I guess next time you guys give me that answer, that's what it is? Oh, I don't understand. I'm asking why the City of Downey doesn't have housing?
So, we do have a housing program, and happy to have my staff follow up with you after this, and they can answer the questions for you directly.
Okay, but I have asked everybody here, nobody knows about it, that's the issue. But, okay, I'll talk to the person who I need to talk to about that. And the second thing is like, I enjoy the YMCA a lot, and last time I was here, they needed 23 millions for the YMCA to be reconstructed, and my question is, you guys announced to be open in 2026. Do you guys know the month? Have you guys collected $23 million to do the YMCA?
The city does not have any jurisdictional control over the YMCA. We don't run that program.
So who does?
The YMCA does.
So I call the YMCA?
That's correct.
So why did they address the issue with you guys last time? That they needed more money?
Again, we'd be happy to talk to you offline. They had asked for the city for contributions. The city did provide contributions to YMCA, but we do not control the YMCA.
Okay, so you do have a housing program. That's what you just said, right?
Madam Speaker, I'm just going to interject here if you don't mind. This public comment period is for you to make public comments to the city council for consideration. It's not, however, a time for a two-way conversation. The city manager has directed you to other city staff members to respond to the concerns you're sharing tonight. But again, this is a time for you to make comments to the city council, but not a time for the city council to actually engage in a two-way conversation.
I went to the city and I asked different people, and nobody gave me an answer. That's why I'm here.
I think the council understands that the city manager is referring you to the respective city staff members to address your concerns.
So I wait here, and you guys tell me.
That's correct. One of our staff will be with you in just a minute. Thank you. Speaker number two, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, Mr. Bradley and staff. I have two items on my agenda this evening, Mayor. Number one, the most important item is that the last time I checked, the Dodgers were winning 5-1 in the top of the eighth inning. Secondly, secondly, I want to talk a little bit about November 4th coming up. It's a big day. It's a special election day. And one thing for sure, as I speak before you, that you and I will be deluged with more ads for or against Proposition 50 than we ever want to know about. Now, a little bit of a backstory. In 2008, the voters of California voted a constitutional amendment to change the method of the districting of maps throughout California. They changed it from being an agenda of the politicians to the people. And that was held throughout until recently, when I'm sure you're well aware that the governor of our state wanted to change that, and he got the representatives, the legislators, to go along with an approval of putting a constitutional amendment on the ballot on November 4th to change the status of that amendment from voter approval back to political approval. Now, I'm going to vote no on Proposition 50, and the main reason I'm going to vote no on it is that I tend not to trust politicians as much as I choose to correspond and agree with what the voters want. That extends and limits my balance here this evening. This ends my comments, Mr. Mayor. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Likewise. Speaker number three, please come forward.
Good evening. It's too far back. All right. Number three. Glad to be here. Lot of gaslighting tonight, dog and pony shows. Little, little too much sometimes, but I'm going to ask everybody to take your rose-colored glasses off at least for 2 minutes and 30 seconds. I'm sorry you encouraged the youth to leave. They are gone, but it would be good to actually talk to youth and understanding some values that not just putting in time and loving what you do are necessarily good things. Loving, just loving is not a virtue in itself. You can love the wrong things. You can love things that are misguided. Putting in time, you could just be spinning your wheels and wasting your time and not getting anywhere. So there has to be some lessons learned, and they have to get some direction of what is right and wrong in many cases. And I would not encourage them to look to our city council to have any direct, good things to work on that they should follow because the city is not going in a good direction. However, I would just like to say, first of all, Donald Trump worked and got a peace deal in the Middle East. He deserves credit for that. And where are my Green Party communist friends that used to come here? You know, ceasefire now and take a knee and wouldn't salute the flag? Where are they now? Nowhere. It was all lip service. It was all lip service. So we should support Donald Trump and give him the credit that is due him. Great job. Also, we should all work in cooperation with him as far as, again, I'll bring up, eliminating sanctuary cities in our policies here in Downey. He has promised that he is going to take cities back from the destruction that has been going on in the cities. Started in Washington, D.C., started in Los Angeles, Chicago, Portland, coming back to L.A. Let's let him start in Downey also, and let's cooperate with 287G. And Article Six of the Constitution is the supremacy clause. You are obligated to support him. And let's have working with DHS and ICE, and let's have our great Parks and Rec go ahead and facilitate some of these things in our areas where they can facilitate staging areas for ICE, like at sobriety checkpoints as well, where you can find somebody that is inebriated and doesn't have a license, no residency, no insurance, and impound their cars and turn them right over to ICE right there, and they could be up for dip. cars and turn them right over to ICE right there, and they could be up for deportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to close public comments?
So moved.
Sort of by the mayor. Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I need to abstain from item number 10 in the consent calendar.
Anyone else? Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
The consent calendar is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from item number 10.
Thank you. Now is the time for administrative reports. There is one report this evening. Discussion regarding art mural on city parking structure. That city council discuss and provide direction to staff regarding art mural options for the city parking structure in downtown Downey. City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report on item number 11?
Absolutely, Mayor. We have Assistant City Manager De Rojas, who will provide the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, before the item begins, I have to abstain myself from this item, so I'll be leaving as this is the last item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. As mentioned tonight, staff will be providing various concept design options for an art mural on the city parking structure in downtown Downey, specifically the parking structure facing the Reyna Street. Just a little bit of background as to how we got here today. So in November 2023, city staff provided an update regarding the city-owned parking structure in downtown Downey. Staff introduced the concept of a painting of a mural on the city parking structure to attract visitors and create more synergy in the downtown area. In February 2024, a presentation was provided to the city council regarding the city parking structure improvements, as well as concepts for a mural based on initial comments from the council for geometric shapes. It was at that meeting, the city council directed staff to issue an RFP to gain additional concepts. In May of 2024, an RFP was issued, and in June, the RFP was closed. At the June 17, 2024 Downtown City Council Subcommittee meeting, the Subcommittee reviewed concepts, and Concept 2 was recommended to move forward, which I'll discuss a little bit further on in the presentation. And originally, it was planned to bring forth to the June 25, 2024 City Council meeting for a discussion of Concept 2, but the item was put on hold for staff to review the Concept 2 for further refinement and adjustments of the mural concept. And today before you is those concepts that we'll be discussing. Regarding the mural themes, the mural themes that we had put into the RFP and development of proposals were done in conjunction with speaking with the Downtown Downey Improvement Association, also known as the DDIA. The mural themes were aerospace history, community legacy, civic pride, future unlimited, and Downey pride. Ultimately, a snapshot of the committee that engages residents and travelers to enhance their appreciation of the qualities that make Downey unique. The mural is also intended to create a piece of public art for an outdoor environment that not only reflects the spirit of the city, but also demonstrates artistic excellence and modern format. The RFP itself, we received four qualified submissions, and then two were rejected because they did not meet the deadline. The evaluation criteria is listed, as you can see here, and was reviewed by a team of the PIO Office, Economic Development, and the CM's office. And based on the evaluation criteria, State Arts was recommended as the number one, ranked one, based on his experience and the different concept that was proposed. I'll also note that State Arts was the only one to submit three different options, where everyone else submitted one. The proposal for State Arts then went on to the downtown Subcommittee meeting for further discussion, and is that that meeting, Concept 2 was selected by the Subcommittee. And Concept 2 that you'll be seeing is done by Tony Reyes, who's a Downey native, which also is a unique perspective for the proposal that was submitted. And I also want to note the downtown Subcommittee is made of Mayor Hector Soza and also Councilmember Arassio Ortiz. So following that meeting, the Subcommittee did ask for a few changes from the original concept that you're going to see in the top-ranked corner. So lighter background, no map outline, and adding orages to tie to the city's orange grove history. Staff also recommended to change the font type to match the city's branding font, so it's all consisting along those lines. So following this discussion, staff then did, as mentioned, put a hold on the mural to make further modifications in working with State Arts. And so those discussions you're going to see, or changes you're going to see in the next following slides. So Concept 2, we're calling Option A for the first one. It celebrates Downey's rich history and identity. The large postcard-style letters highlight iconic local landmarks from aerospace and innovation to historic architecture and civic pride. More specifically, the letters in the postcard include the Kaufman Building, the Reeves Mansion, the Downey Flag, and Apollo spacecraft atop of the Saturn rocket, the Casa de Parley Johnson House, and the Downey Grammar School Arch. The map in the mural serves as a reminder of the interconnectedness of Downey's neighborhoods and residents. The orange tree hanging off the word "Downey" is a nod to the city's rich agriculture history and a symbol of growth, health, and vitality. Lastly, at the bottom-left corner of the mural, there is a young astronaut that gazes upwards, symbolizing the boundless potential and bright future of the city's youth. The figure also commemorates future generations, inspires a sense of wonder and ambition, reflecting Downey's proud legacy in the aerospace industry and its ongoing commitment to innovation and exploration. So this is an image of Option A as described. Moving on to Option B, includes the same imagery as Option A, but instead of the young astronaut at the bottom-left corner of the mural, and includes an illustration of the Space Shuttle Columbia, further highlighting the city's aerospace history and a nod to the city's Smithsonian-affiliated Columbia Memorial Space Center. And lastly, we have Option C. It includes the same imagery as Option A, but without the young astronaut or the Space Shuttle at the bottom-left corner of the mural. So next steps. So there are three phases to this project. Phase one, which is pre-installation, would is expected to be about two weeks. Phase two for mural installation, about five weeks, and then Phase three, post-installation, about two weeks. The total timeframe from the art mural production is about 10 weeks, and is anticipated to begin in January 2026 and end in April 2026. I just want to note why it couldn't be started earlier is because the mural artists and State Arts have already been committed to other projects for the rest of the year. The approximate cost is about $94,000, and the funding source is the Arts and Public Places Fund. I just want to note that no general fund monies will be used for this project. And just as a reminder for the public as to what the Arts and Public Places Fund is, it is a city program that provides original artwork that are easily accessible to the general public throughout the city. A 1% public art fee is applied to construction and reconstruction projects, with monies used for future art projects in the city. So these monies are dedicated solely for art projects and not for anything else. So this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Vanya. Council colleagues, any comments or questions?
I have a comment, Mayor. If I may. Thank you, Vanya. First, I want to say thank you, recognize State Arts, who are here. It is always really special to know the artist is a local Downey person, and so I don't know if he's joining us on council tonight. But thank you for being here. These are absolutely beautiful murals. Before I get to that, I just want to make sure that it is clear for our public, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Vanya, what is the Arts and Public Places Fund? A lot of members in our community don't necessarily understand that there is a specific fund which can only be used for art-related purposes. And I think that that's been a question for the Downey Gateway Arch, but now also for this mural in particular. I want to say, the options are beautiful. My favorite especially is Option B, Concept 2. That paying homage to our space history and the Columbia Space Shuttle is very unique. Perhaps people in our community may or may not know where Downey is in the halls of history when it comes to space exploration. And I do have to say, in one of our recent travels to Orlando and Cape Canaveral specifically, and in talking to a couple of astronauts there, and I mentioned I was from Downey, you know, he paused mid-sentence to acknowledge Downey, the home of the Apollo. And so again, this mural is just fantastic. It provides that rich history that we, I think, were looking for in our downtown, and continues to educate generations to come in where Downey's history is when it comes to space exploration. So thank you, State Arts, for continuing to be forward-thinking and submitting the drawings on time. We appreciate that.
Thank you, council member. Any other?
And tagging on, as you've mentioned where the source is coming from, and this was established by the city council before us several years ago to bring that, but it's also valued, the 1% fee, is that correct? Valued over improvements more than $500,000? So it's for larger projects that help fund some of this?
Yes, it is for the larger projects that go on in the city. I don't know the exact dollar value. I don't know if our other staff would know.
But on those types of big developments.
Yeah, there's a threshold, especially when it comes to a reconstruction of projects, of what that value is.
Okay. And I too like what Councilwoman Frometta said. It's a Downey person. I know that's been stated and requested. Having State Galleries, State Arts come and collaborate with it. I mean, we're getting all the points of Downey that people want. Has this artist, Mr. Reyes, Tony, done anything small in our city? Sometimes we have little bits and pieces of murals and such. I see his resume here, but maybe nothing that we've seen that he's done?
So like you mentioned in the staff report, he has had some notable works in San Diego, State University, Fox, City of Huntington Beach, and Los Angeles Police Department and Universal Studios. I do want to note that State Arts, who will be overseeing the project, has had a lot of murals recently. The most specific one, I would say Kaiser Permanente, they have done mural projects here in Downey.
Yes, it's beautiful.
Yes, so those have been more recently done.
Yeah, these are colorful, they're good, they're very fresh and clean. And, you know, I too have to say that showing our Space Shuttle there, that's, as you say, the crux of our aviation history. And it was, I learned today, or maybe someone else might mention, I learned today that the Columbia, in the coloring, the Columbia Space Shuttle that we have named the Space Center was entirely white. And then subsequently, after the very first one, then they came in with, like, the fuselage here is in a different color, or orange or rust. It changed. But in relation to the Columbia itself that maybe we want to impress upon, or state that we had the first one, maybe that coloring should be all white, like the very first Columbia?
I think it's up to, depends on the council's direction on that. So the first two launches of the Columbia had the white tank, and so in 1981, with one of them. Every other launch after that, it was the orange tank. And after the second launch, engineers determined the white paint on the tank was unnecessary and added to the much extra weight to the vehicle. I do just want to show a photo. So a launch of the Space Shuttle Columbia on its ill-fated last mission of 107 in 2003, the event for which the Space Center is named after. This is the shuttle, and so hence why the orange was selected, since it directly ties to the Space Center buildings. But it's ultimately up to the council discretion.
And I think it adds that bit of contrast. Otherwise, it would be white, white, white. It would be a little too much white, because under the thrusters where the smoke is, I would like to see that slightly more white.
There's a lot of orange in there.
Yes. That one is the orange, but maybe slightly. We can tone it down slightly, not necessarily white, but tone it down so that it's not as orange.
We could definitely work with State Arts in making those types of modifications.
All in all, it's beautiful.
And I'll just read for the letters, in case someone's listening. You know, we changed the letters on what was the appearance in them. D was the Kaufman Building, the Volte Aircraft Rotunda. O, the Reeves Mansion. W is the Downey Flag. N is an Apollo spacecraft atop a Saturn rocket. E, the Casa de Parley Johnson home. And then Y is the Downey Grammar School Arch. Okay? So thank you very much for that.
Okay, I think, okay, go ahead.
We were both on the downtown Subcommittee, so we, I appreciate, I wanted to hear the feedback of my other council colleagues before chiming in, but I personally do like Option B more. I think, I think I do agree with my colleague Dorothy, I think, and Claudia, the orange is just too much.
On the thrusters?
On the thrusters. I personally prefer the white on the Space Shuttle 2. So depending on what my colleagues agree, I personally go for the white. But I'll leave it up to my councils, too, also. The Option B is my go-to.
Well, I think, going back to, Vanya, what you just indicated and what you showed us, you know, the Columbia Space Shuttle being named after, or the Columbia here building is after that picture that you showed us, and it has that bit of orange, I think would be, that would be my preference, but just lighter on the smoke.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I think the consensus is Option B. I mean, I think it's, I think it's beautiful. I want to commend State Arts and the artist who's not here. It looks amazing. Thank you. And encompasses, I think we kind of went through several motions of putting this together, and, well, we didn't put it together, but, you know, just, you know, taking all of our input in and incorporating, you know, this idea of what exemplifies Downey. So thank you guys for that. I would like to see it also in white, and, you know, maybe if we see it in white, it may not flow with the rest of the color scheme. I don't know, but if we can take a look at that, but I think we can walk away with a consensus that Option B is the way to go. So we can see just a slight variation with some white on the booster and around the shuttle, maybe two or three options, and, you know, see this going any further from there.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. So reduce the orange on the thrusters, and then giving two options, one of orange and one in white.
I'm kind of on the consensus that most people won't remember the very first one, but they will remember what they see, and showing us the picture of what it currently looks like now seems to be more in line what we should show up there, because you'll see.
That's what I'm thinking.
And that's why at first I was definitely on the white, all white, but I think, like you mentioned, a little bit less orange on the thrusters there seems to be what they have right now, or what they had right now.
Yep.
So how does it move forward? Because we've
Yeah, so
Split, I think, at this point.
Unless our executive director of the Space Center has any, you know.
He's just here for the show.
Yeah, you're just here.
So just to kind of recap, so two to two, white to orange? Is that where we're kind of at right now?
I'm with my colleague, Heather, with the white, to see a variation between the white. Today, we have to decide definitively so we can present.
No, so as part of the phase, let me just show you, as a part of phase one, design variations. So we can use that portion right there, phase one, is just to come back with those two options, white and orange, and then also just changing the color of the thrusters.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, this is, this is really amazing. I think it's going to really stand out in that area of downtown Downey, and I think people are going to be excited about that. So I'm glad we're walking away with a consensus here. We just want to see a variation, a little bit different on the shuttle.
And I hope it may be a first big mural of many, many to come.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a vote on this? We agreed on
I think we've got our direction, because we're going to bring it back anyway at this point, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanya. Okay. So there'll be no vote tonight on that, but we got clear direction, and we're now going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Police Officer Ray Barentes, a two-year veteran of the Chilchilla Police Department who passed away while on routine patrol when his vehicle collided with a big rig. And this current time is 8:13. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, guys.